Move from a week ago Wednesday to today. My name is Mayor McFadden and I would like to call this meeting to order. For those of you who are able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Please be seated. If I temporarily turn off my video, it's because I'm adjusting my leg brace or icing or whatever the case might be. And I promise to carry on as long as I can. I want to thank everybody that sent me well wishes and a speedy recovery. I really appreciate it. It means a lot. Sending me the good vibes. Thank you very much. Sadly, Chief Dave Conklin will not be with us this evening. His father is involved in, as we speak, in a very serious health incident. So, you know, certainly we include Dave and his father and his family in our prayers and thoughts and wish him the best. So, good luck. We're with you, Dave. All right, so Mayor's comments briefly on the budget. Deputy Mayor Shaw, the village employees, and Debbie Matthews, who's helping us in the office this week. We're doing very well, making a lot of good progress on the budget, very excited about it. All the hard work and trimming that we did last year is paying off in dividends. No promises yet. You never know what can come up, but so far, our trajectory is very positive in terms of maintaining the tax cap. And so I'm really pleased to make that announcement. This will be interesting. I'm sure I'll get a good reaction on this one in terms of elected officials pay. For those of you who may not know, the elected positions in the village are not paid. The mayor's duties require a minimum of 40 to 60 hours a week, which I'm happy to put in. The trustees also accrue a number of hours each week. So I wanted to float the idea of our village joining the majority of the state of New York in paying their elected officials. Not a lot of money, something symbolic, maybe, something reasonable. Speaking for myself, I think the community should consider the idea of paying its elected officials. So I'm seeking your feedback over the next several weeks and based on that feedback, I'll determine whether or not to pursue this. This is an idea that comes directly from me, not from any of the other members of the board. So I'd really appreciate it if you, the listeners, and of course, my fellow board members, would share their thoughts with me on this and see if this is something we would consider pursuing for future elected officials. Now, in terms of sewer charges, I wanted to bring up something that we're pursuing. Working again with Deputy Mayor Shaw and the village attorney, our accountant, and John, Elizabeth, and Jeff, we are considering changing the system we currently use to pay for sewer costs. Currently, we include sewer costs in the property taxes. So we take the $327,000 that it takes to run the sewer department and it's distributed through property tax. So you're paying your portion of that based on your tax assessment. And what we want to do is move to a bit-based charging system, which has multiple benefits for the community. For example, currently, if you own a quarter acre somewhere in the village and have no property, no building on it, no structure.
Just talking about the sewer right now.
I'm sorry, whoever that was, do you mind muting? Okay, so, thank you. So, right now, if you own a quarter acre of a property somewhere in the village, you're paying the same amount of sewer as you would if you were the largest estate in the equivalence of the fact that you're both paying your assessed tax rate. There's also about 17 or 18 people in the village that have their own septic tank system and well, who are also paying for sewer that they don't get the use of. So this is what we're considering, making it a fair system based on, for example, water in is one of the common methods that are used. And charging in that manner, so for example, if you own a small residence and with one bathroom, you're not going to pay the same as, say, the largest estate with 15 bathrooms. I think that's a fair and equitable process. The benefits of it are tremendous. When you have charges for your sewer, which is totally endorsed by the comptroller as well as the NICOM and the state, you're able to build up reserves and prepare for pending costs of infrastructure. Now, that is just a huge issue we're facing. As everyone knows, we just had a bunch of water main breaks and I want to thank everybody involved in working that through. And this is both, you know, throughout the village in different areas and the expenses are tremendous. This is not going to change. Years ago, when Deputy Shaw was a trustee under Houston Stevins' mayor, she came up with a way for people to pay a fee every quarter for their water bill. And that fee goes automatically into a capital fund. And we've tapped into that capital fund numerous times. It's been extremely helpful. Rather than going into debt, which we have a lot of, we'll be addressing that in the budget process. And if we had done that 15, 20 years ago, we'd be in much better shape as we come across all of these infrastructure challenges in our sewer. So that's something that I'll be bringing to the board when it's a little further developed and the community for feedback. And so if you have any thoughts on that, you're welcome to get in touch with any of us on the board and we'll try and work that through for you and do whatever we think is best with your approval, of course. So with that, I'd like to move into reports. And if there's any questions on the reports, you're welcome to bring that up during the public comment section. During the report section this evening, though, we, I've invited Jim Hayes to comment on work he's been doing for his committee on the environment and environmental initiatives. He'll go into some details and there's a potential resolution involved. We also have, as a guest this evening, a representative from Rockland and Orange, Orange and Rockland, to present briefly their Phase Two work and respond briefly to any questions. And I may, and then we'll also be discussing in more detail the police reform plan. So why don't we start out with Jim, if you're available?
Yes, David, I am.
Thank you. Do you mind, do you care to briefly describe what's behind this resolution that we're hoping to discuss tonight?
Yes, I do. And that is, we are, we have a a task force in the village, which the board has approved, which is purposes to lower the greenhouse gas emissions of government buildings, government operations, and the village in general. And these, these processes will ultimately save the village money because if you burn less fuels, you save money. And particularly if cars that are in the village are used by the village are converted to electrical vehicles, the running cost will be reduced by more than 50%, as well as maintenance is reduced substantially because an electric motor is far more easy to, needs much less maintenance than a complicated internal combustion engine. So one of the early stages that we need, one of the early things we need to do is do an inventory of the use, the emissions of greenhouse gases that the government buildings in the city, in the village, as well as the fleet of cars and trucks produce. And in order to do that, it's a matter of doing some calculations and converting the fuel used into tons of carbon dioxide. And in order to do that, there are a whole bunch of state agencies that help with this kind of thing, but they're somewhat complicated and sometimes their sites are out of date. We've done a fair amount of research on it. And there is a, there is a group that has been put together by a consortium of local governments that was formed to help municipalities with this kind of thing. And it's called the International Consortium for Local Environmental Initiatives. And this organization offers technical assistance, assigning technicians to help each local government that joins their group. They not only help with the initial greenhouse gas inventories, but also help model the extent that emissions can be reduced by taking specific actions. They are specifically tuned to New York State requirements. And even though they're a national organization, they assign a technician to help us with this at no charge, but there is a subscription charge. They also provide a tool for doing the calculations, which would be very helpful. So there is an initial, there's a subscription fee for this of $600 for a municipality our size. We're working closely with the town of Tuxedo. They are doing the same thing. In fact, we're the same group that are doing both. And they, I'm sure, will probably want to do this. I don't know what the, they haven't, they haven't committed to it. So the charge is $600 for the village. If the town comes in, the charge for the village will be $300 because I've asked the organization if they would allow us to use the same subscription since we're both working together and they said they would. So what I'm asking for is a commitment for the $300. I mean, sorry, for the $600 for the village, but hopefully it will only be 300. So that's, that's number one. So there are other things. Do you want to, do you want to do that resolution first?
Yeah, well, let me, let me just ask a question. So first, Trustee Gluck, I believe you're also involved in this. Is that correct?
Yes, I am. I guess I'm a nominal member of the task force.
And is, do you and Jim concur on this, on the board passing this?
Yes, I, I think, you know, the place to start is to measure what you have so you can see what you can improve upon. So this is really the, you know, the building blocks to measure what we have here.
Yeah, it sounds great to me. Trustee McHugh, Caster, and Shaw, do you have any comments? Let me read the resolution. Be it resolved, the village of Tuxedo Park will join the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives, PRENs, I C L E I N PREN, which is a consortium of local governments formed to help municipalities address environmental problems, including climate change and an annual cost not to exceed $600. So my question would be, where would we take that, Trustee Gluck, what line item do you think we should take that? You don't have to answer now. Just let's consider it for the final writing, recording of the resolution, unless you have it off the top of your head.
Well, I don't think it fits neatly within any of our budgeted categories as far. So I think an expense like this would just have to come out of unallocated surplus.
Yeah, okay, that's terrific. All right, so I asked for a second.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I don't think I agree with Paul where he's wanting to take it out of. I would suggest you take it out of contingency, which is line item 1990, spot 40.
Okay, well, can I suggest, gentlemen, that offline we decide, which?
Well, I mean, where we spent 12 and a half percent of the budget is line item of $10,000. I certainly don't want to use our unallocated surplus. So this is the most logical one using contingency because this is an anticipated expense that it seems like we all agree we should pursue.
All right, so what I suggest then is that after the meeting, Paul and/or Alan get together with Elizabeth, our treasurer, and determine which line they think they should take it from. I'm sure you'll do the right thing. Any other discussion?
For the record, I stand educated and corrected and I think that's the better place to take it.
Well, you're actually sitting, but if you want to actually stand corrected, you can do that. All right, so let me just add that. Alan, just read that allocation line again, please, as an addendum to this.
Certainly, it's line item 1990, spot 40. The heading is contingency.
Accepted. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, the eyes have it. Jim, is there anything else you'd like to discuss? I know you may have another report.
Yes, I do. I have a couple more. One is for Michelle. She sent you an email about a webinar that we'd like to do and I'd like to, it's called the Sea Change Primer. It's a educational and nonpartisan webinar on the science of climate change. The primer was developed in consultation with scientists, business leaders, and public policy experts working on climate change. And basically, to keep it short, it explains the science of climate change. It deals with the downsides of that, but it also deals in some detail with what we can do about it. And that's basically what we're about with these task forces, is to do things that will help that problem and at the same time, save the village and the, and the member, the community at large, money because it can be saved. And, and really, I mean, it really can be. I mean, General Motors isn't going to all electric vehicles in 15 years because that's a dumb idea. It's a smart idea because they're better. And this is going to happen and there's no reason why we should drag our feet. I saw that what Michelle is asking is that they split, there's a cost to this webinar, webinar, and she's suggesting it be split between the village and the town. So the village's charge would be $150. And the town would pick up the other. I assume it will.
When is the webinar, Jim?
What's that?
When is the webinar?
We haven't scheduled it yet, but it will be, and we'll let everybody know when it is and we hope the community will.
Okay, so is it okay to vote on that at the next meeting or the time will be a problem?
That question I can't answer. Michelle is more involved in this than I am.
Okay, well, it looks like we have.
Now it's better than, than later always, I think.
All right, well, we have a, this just came to our attention. I don't have a resolution for it. Paul, Trustee Gluck, if you would like to make a resolution, I'm sure we could consider it now.
Certainly. I think the resolution would read along the lines of the following. Resolve that the village expend up to $150 for a $300 fee to be shared with the town of Tuxedo relating to, and Jim, just insert the name of the organization here for a moment.
It's called Sea Change, the Sea Change Primer.
Webinar organized by Sea Change dealing with the effects and consequences of climate change.
Very second. Okay, any discussions by the trustees?
Yeah, all I'll say is, Paul, can you add that it's going to come out of line item 1990, spot 40, contingency, just to make this clean?
So moved.
Moved, so moved. All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Passed. Thank you very much. Jim, do you have a brief summary of anything else you'd like to?
Yes, I do. In terms of the lakes and the measurements to be made this summer, I'd sent the trustees a draft of a watershed management plan. And, and one of the things that might be done this summer, which I think is important, is to make chloride measurements in the bottom waters of the lake and also sample and make analyses of the stormwater coming from the stormwater pipes that feed into the lake. So I just think, I'd just like to get that before you. It doesn't have to be acted on at this point. But the other thing is that it is the time for notification of groundskeepers that phosphate-bearing fertilizer, lawn fertilizers are banned in the village and those those, those companies that do put them on people's lawns may well lose their right to work in the park. And it might be useful to put that at the entrance on the board so that everybody knows that's the case. I know that they're banned in the state, but they are available from other, other places.
Yes, we do have a several borders. Thank you very much, Jim.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to read the report yet because I've been occupied. But I've heard some very good feedback from, from other trustees. So I believe it's also been printed within our reports and the public's welcome to comment on that. Okay, thank you, Jim. So at this point, I'd like to invite the representative from Orange and Rockland to give us a brief presentation on Phase Two. And if all things work out technically, John Ledwith is going to throw up a PowerPoint for us, for us. And he's also going to introduce the gentleman from O and R. John?
Mr. Coffey, are you on the line? I see your name there. John?
Good evening, John. I am on the line, but Teresa will be doing this presentation for us.
Okay, I'm going to try to pull up your presentation unless you can do it on your own. Can you share the screen at all, John, or no?
Let me give it a shot. Hang on one second.
Sure.
Beautiful. Does everyone see that? All the trustees and public. Thank you. All right, please proceed and welcome, by the way.
Good evening, everyone. This is Teresa Vizzolo with Orange and Rockland. John Chofey was the project manager representing Orange and Rockland for Phase One of the project. I will be taking over for Phase Two of the project. John, next slide. I'll just do a quick recap of Phase One, an introduction of Phase Two, and then we'll have open discussion or questions, I think facilitated by Mr. Ledwith. Next slide. So the scope of Phase One was about 15,000 feet of Hendrix installation. And we converted the system, which was an antiquated system, to 13,2 KV. About 90 poles were replaced and they were taller than the existing. And construction was completed in December of, that should be 2020. If you drive around the village, you'll kind of see the scope of where Phase One was. Basically continental and you could see where the village clerk's office is. So that was a pretty large scope for our first phase of the project and was successfully completed. And we'll go to the next slide, just to discuss some of the benefits we saw as part of the storm hardening effort during the hurricane that we recently had in last August. The upgraded areas didn't lose power, which basically proves that, you know, the system is storm hardened. The tree trimming and danger tree removal that was facilitated really enhanced the system within the village of Tuxedo Park. Again, those danger trees, which are considered dead, diseased, or dying, we had a certified arborist on site during the tree trimming process to really make sure we classified the right trees. And they removed the risk of future outages. We, there's other engineering enhancements that we added into the system, which are motor-operated air brakes and allows for remote switching. And that basically reduces response times and shorten outages, thus minimizing customer impact.
Excuse me one minute. Everyone that's not presenting, please turn off your microphone. Thank you.
We used a innovative proprietary cabling design, which is spacer cable, which is a Hendrix design. The conductor will withstand both tree and miscellaneous branch contact and ultimately eliminate temporary faults. So the project, basically, as we've seen, especially in the hurricane and recent storm events, overall resiliency was enhanced and we had a positive impact in the reliability for the customers within that first phase. Again, increased use of automation, getting, you know, up to kind of the 21st century standards in there. We created new distribution ties and we increased clearances for vegetation management. Next slide. So some of the lessons learned that, you know, we're trying to instill as we go forward. There may be times during the project when extra crews or longer hours may be required to minimize any plant outages that we have. We work closely and Clive Bogle, who's on the phone, work closely with John Ledwith and yourself, Mayor McFadden, to make sure we were able to kind of get the work done with as minimum impact as possible. Another kind of area of concern, which we saw on Phase One, which we're looking to kind of continue the track we kind of left with. Road closure notifications were made to the village daily, but didn't always make it to all the residents. So Orange and Rockland worked with the village to improve the notification project. And that's kind of the trajectory we're looking to go for this Phase Two. Due to unforeseen conditions, sometimes road closures had to be done out of sequence or if there were certain areas that needed to be addressed sooner rather than later, there were some small deviations that happened. But again, our field representative, Clive Bogle, who was there in the first phase, will continue to be there in the second phase and maintain those contacts appropriately. Just as a note, on occasion, residents did enter the work zone without permission, typically on foot or on bicycles. We just want to make sure everyone is aware when there's, you know, people working or trucks around, just to be extra cautious. Make sure you make eye contact with either the flaggers or the workers on location and they'll be able to safely escort you around the construction area. So Phase Two, a little smaller scope, 9,000 feet, but kind of similar amount of poles being replaced. The reconductoring, which I have a map of, is East Lake. East Lake and Stable Road with, again, the Hendrix three-phase distribution and that'll end on Crow's Nest Road. We currently, as you've probably seen, had tree trimming and danger tree removal in place. They started January 18th and are, actually, as of this week, they're finishing up out there. And April 1st is actually a moratorium because we do have bat restriction in the area where we can't conduct any tree trimming or removal operations between April 1st and October 31st. Our overhead construction is slated to start April 15th and end December 30th. And really, that last month is for any punch list or cleanup items. And the Phase Two scope highlighted again, the water, the Tuxedo Water Treatment Plant is the critical facility for the village. So that'll be re-conducted, reconducted in that area. And we actually completed some significant tree trimming and danger tree removal there, which had, did have a positive impact with these last couple wind events that we saw recently in that area as well. So already, we're seeing some benefits just by taking a look at kind of what the vegetation is out there. As you all know, it's a very heavily treat area. And that's a lot of the issues in the need for enhancing the resiliency of the system in the village of Tuxedo Park. Roads affected, East Lake, Chastaloo, which is where the water plant is, and then approximately 300 feet off the side roads from East Lake Ridge, Cliff, Akoma, and Crow's Nest. And I think that's all I had. I think the key questions that we had was, were initially the duration. So our tree trimming did start in January. We're expected to finish at the end of December. All going very well. Road closures, as I mentioned, they'll be communicated as they were previously. We hope to have that clear communication between ourselves and the village. There was also a question about rental space. I know that our first contractor, Hogland, did rent space from the village. I can't say yes or no whether they'll be doing that again or the low bidder. Once we have the PO awarded, we'll be able to have that. Once we have the PO awarded, we'll be able to have that discussion. If it is still an option, there is benefit that we see as Orange and Rockland to utilizing that space that the contractor rented from you. But that would be up to the contractor and the village.
Okay, thank you so much. That was a great presentation. Before John leads any brief questioning, I did want to say that I appreciate you wanting to improve conditions in terms of road closures, you know, between the part being packed to its capacity because of COVID lockdown, and the fact that we have very narrow roads and only two entrances and exits.
Yeah.
We did a good job. However, in terms of improving communication, there's always room for improvement, of course. There were situations where we were told that there would be a road closure, half the road, to then find out after we arrived that it was fully closed, and we would have to literally, it's hard to understand, but if you're driving on that side of the lake, you literally have to drive around the entire lake again to get out. So that was very inconvenient, but I know we're working on that.
Yeah.
And the other issue we had were, were flagmen. And the, in cases where there was a, you know, last minute road closure, 100% or something, the flagmen were literally, you know, at the event, not say a half mile down the road where people would have had choices not to go around the entire lake. I see there's quite a few people on this call that had complained about this. But I'm, we'll work it out, and I appreciate you working with us on that. Considering, considering everything, you know, things went smoothly, and we appreciate the work you're doing. And yeah, I'm happy to say that the storm didn't affect the new wiring, and we appreciate your presentation this evening. John, do you want to field any brief questions before we move on?
Yes, I have expressed on behalf of the village board our concerns about traffic flow and try not to let people drive halfway around the lake before they have to turn all the way back around. Orange and Rockland did submit a building permit application, paid the applicable fees, and submitted a plan consistent with what they did for the Phase One project. So I don't know if the public has any questions at this point.
Okay, thank you. We really appreciate it, and we look forward to working with you on Phase Two.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming to me.
Have a great night.
So next, John Ledwith.
Mr. Mayor.
Who is speaking?
My, this is Mark Citron.
Hi, Mark. How are you?
Good, good evening, everyone. I had one question to direct to the Orange and Rockland crew.
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry. Is anyone from Orange and Rockland still here?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Thank, I'm so sorry, Mark. Okay, Mark, please.
Yes, ma'am, I live on a coma road, which is off East Lake. And I was struck by what appears to have been the random removal of trees far away from any transmission lines. It was somewhat of a concern to me since it denuded a portion of some properties south of me close to the East Lake Road. And I was just wondering, when Nelson Tree Service did all that work, how was it decided which trees were to be removed? And whether there was any range of distance from the transmission lines or the poles that was set when they made the decisions to cut down the trees? Because many trees along the south end of Akoma Road are now just stumps, and they don't appear to be in any way related to the transmission line or to the poles that are present.
Thank you, Mark.
Sure. Just, what was the name of that road again? Because I know, so just to kind of level set too. So we have our project that is ongoing, which is a capital improvement project for that defined scope. We also have our regular blue sky contractors and vegetation management that go around annually and have different kind of areas that they hit for their normal tree trimming operation. So I could take the name of that road and, and just confirm.
Sure. It's, it's a coma road, and I'm not referring. It's, it's removal to the stump of numerous trees along a coma road, which appear to be very far removed from the transmission line of the poles.
Mark, it's, it's, it's Justin Abalo. I think, I think some of the things you're talking about, some of the stumps are on my property on Akoma. And I think some of those, some of those trees were in fact taken down by O N R, but some of them, some of them we took down.
Well, thank you, Justin, for letting, letting me know and answering that portion of the question.
And we assume it was done within the law of four trees per year.
So just to level set, we do have rigorous guidelines in terms of the envelope, we call it, around the proposed transmission line. So we are going 20 feet around to make sure there is no potential for tree impact, and the poles will be a little bit taller. So, you know, that could be, the new poles will be a little bit taller, so you may be seeing things that, you know, look a little bit different. Also, we did hire a third-party arborist that was certified, and that arborist classified every single tree that was either dead, diseased, or dying that had to come down for the safety of personnel and property, really. So once we identify a tree as dead, diseased, or dying, we are, we're basically taking ownership of saying that this tree has a potential impact to cause harm. So we have gone ahead and contacted all of the owners that are of those particular trees. And either they door hangers or attempted to make contact with the property owners, notifying them of specific trees that would be coming down. So that's how we would normally operate for our overhead system for tree clearing.
Thank you for that response, and thank you, Justin, for enlightening me.
Okay, so by the way, you mentioned you couldn't cut trees for a certain period of time because of bats. I live on Pepperd Road. I had the first bat in my house I've had in 20 years. It was a big one, too. And I was in bed, in bed, lying after my knee surgery. I couldn't do anything but hide under the covers. It was awful. And Robin, my wife, is completely afraid of that. So it was, it was pretty crazy. All right, so are we ready to move on before I close this portion of the presentation? Okay, thanks. John, I would like you to comment briefly, if you will, on the status of the Board of Assessment Reviews efforts.
Yes, the Board of Assessment Review did finalize their, their comments approximately three weeks ago. I provided a draft report regarding those changes. It will all be formally available to the public on April 1st, and any change of assessment notices will be sent to the public on April 1st.
So we're, in fact, ahead of schedule, and I want to, I wanted to make that point and thank everyone involved. Okay, we're going to move on to the Police Reform Committee Plan. It's been posted. We've solicited comments. We've sent out a survey and.
Mayor? I'm, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I was muted. Well, well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
It seems to me, I, do we need a, a resolution approving the final assessment role, the final changes?
Well, you, we have offline all agreed to the changes. We, we can certainly, I'll check meeting before we do the posting. Thank you for bringing that up. So with, with the police reform plan, this is something that was mandatory after the George Floyd incident. Many governors, including ours, decided to request changes amongst the police departments in the state. It's been a very positive experience that the municipalities have been required to put together committees and review, discuss, and implement, excuse me, present a plan to the public for acceptance by resolution. And we've done that, and the comment, no, we've had no comments or suggestions, which is terrific. Later in the meeting, unless there is an objection by anyone in the public or any of the trustees, we'll be voting on that. So is there anyone that would like to comment on the police reform plan? Okay, all right, let's see where we stand. Okay, so why don't we open up the floor to public comments? Couple minutes on old and new business. You know, two to three minutes, if you will, any comment on, you have on any of the reports, presentations, or anything that we've discussed so far in the report section, and also to include new and old business. So the floor is open.
Mayor, I would like to ask, please, of Mr. Ledwith, a little bit about the.
Excuse me, do you, do you mind just identifying yourself?
This is Claudio Guazzoni De Zanit.
Thank you.
And I'm interested in talking a little bit about the changes to the tax assessments, and I think Mr. Ledwith probably have, has that information at the tip of his fingers. So Mr. Ledwith, how many?
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. This isn't a Q and A. This is a comment section, but I do invite you to contact John offline. And if you feel there's anything significant that you should be bringing up, you're welcome to do it at the next meeting. But this is really just a comment section, not to engage a particular person on the board or village employee into a back and forth discussion for what you're looking for on a personal basis.
All right, well, then my, my comment is a little bit more color on the number of people that applied and a number of reductions that were granted would be nice.
Okay, and that will be posted by April 1st. Off the top of our head, let's see, I'll go to, if I may, to trustee McQ. What, what were the people that, how many people applied or grieved? I can't remember.
Believe it, I believe it was around 30, 32. I'm just seeing if I can pull it up.
And then the results, Claudio, will be posted by April 1st, and that's the first time the public will see who, who was rejected, who was accepted, et cetera. And so that, that's the procedure. So, you know, just for the purposes of the comment period, I'll let Alan speak, and then we'll move on.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So 35 in total. And the question was, how many changes, how many changes? Was that it? Correct. I'm a little bit uncomfortable saying that, Mayor, just because.
I agree.
Trustee Glock is correct. We have.
I agree 100%. This will be, this will be made public as, as the law requires. And I agree with you. I think that we should all just be patient, wait for the posting rather than getting into it in a Q and A. All right, so I agree. All right, any other questions?
Mayor.
Who's speaking, please?
Yes, this is Mark Citron again.
Hi, Mark, how are you?
I'd like to address briefly the agenda item involving the renewal of the lease for the Weewa Beach Club for this summer. From my perspective, as a member of the board of the Weewa Beach Club, I thought that last summer, even with the COVID restrictions and the conditions placed upon the operation of the club by the board, was a successful season. And I would recommend to the board respectfully that a renew the lease of the beach club for one additional year at the least. And certainly with respect to any issues involving continued COVID restrictions and any other conditions that the Board of Trustees wishes to put on the operation of the beach club that we engage in the discussion as soon as possible, so that we can let our members know that the club will open in a timely manner this coming season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, and I agree. You guys did a terrific job on the COVID stuff, just terrific. You set the standard. In fact, tonight, I had expected a representative from the Weewa Beach Club to present their terms, hopeful, hopeful terms to the board so that we could debate. Is that going to be the case? Are you?
My understanding is that the president of the club, Bonnie Toguchi, is here at the meeting on, by telephone.
Yes, I'm here.
And.
Hi, Bonnie. Okay, terrific. So I know it's on the agenda for later, and we'll, we'll definitely give them, we'll give you all a platform. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Mayor Jay Reichardt.
Hi, Jed.
Hi, I, I also want to make a couple of comments on the, the Weewa Beach Club.
Please.
First, I'm in favor of it. Two other comments. I've been reading some of the supporting documentation that you sort of attached to the meeting agenda.
Yes.
And there seems to be some suggestion that perhaps in addition to, to club-sponsored swimming, as a way of speaking, there could be off-hours use of the beach by residents, which has a remarkable number of dangers, swimming without a lifeguard, et cetera. But one that people may not realize, it is a violation of village law for anybody other than a club member to swim in the lake. It is it's code 65 dash four dot B, if anybody wants to look it up.
May I suggest, Jay, that we, we move this to the actual discussion about it? Because you're making more of, you're making more of a recommendation statement rather than a question. And let's address this, if you don't mind. I mean, if you don't mind, in, in the actual portion of the agenda where we discuss this, these are all valid points that I would love to hear. I'm sure the public would love to hear. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, yeah, no, I just didn't know if we were going to have discussion then, or if this was my only chance to say something.
Good, oh, good, good point, good question. No, I think it should be, I, I think that you, we, it's up to Bonnie, but, you know, you know, we, I certainly take your point as it stands now. And I'll address the suggestions you're referring to in the, in the reports during that period of time.
Okay, then I yield the floor for now.
Oh, thank you so much. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, last call. Okay, thank you so much. And again, we'll pick up the Weewa discussion in greater detail as we move forward. All right, so what I have next is the consent agenda. And the consent agenda includes items that theoretically don't require much discussion and can be passed with one resolution. However, it is my obligation, having put the agenda together, if there's any specific items in the consent agenda that any single board member would like to debate and remove from the consent agenda, that welcome to suggest that now, and we will remove it. So I, the floor is open to the trustees to see if there's anything in the agenda that they would like to remove. I know, Paul, you had an issue with the resolution. I think that might have been resolved, or are you raising your hand?
No.
Trustee Glock, please.
Yes, I think there is a, there, I think the January 25th, 2021 Board of Assessors meeting minutes needs to come out, and then we could just make a correction to that, which I think is non-controversial, you know, separately.
Okay, terrific. And which one was that?
The first one, January 25th, 2021 Board of Assessors Meeting Minutes.
Okay, thank you. And that's number A. Oh, I see there's a misprint on the type. Okay, so it resolved that the Board of Trustees approved the consent agenda. Items B, B, D, E, and F excluding January 25th, 2021 Board of Assessors Meeting Minutes, which will be discussed separately. May I have a second?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Please. You don't, that's not a second, is it? That's a sorrow.
I'll second, and then one other item of discussion. I also believe there was supposed to be a revision to the Community Paper Shredding Day.
Correct.
That was supposed to be circulated and.
And that didn't get done in time?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll take that out, too. So I amend my resolution. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
So all we're adopting is item B. Is that correct?
Well, well, actually, we're, we're doing, since there's a typo on A, B, and C, it's really should be A, then B, C, D, E, F, and G. Get it? Because all the, the meeting notes should not have been put into one number. Because otherwise, we wouldn't be able to take them out. We'd have to take out the whole number. So let's do the following. Let me, let me go back. Okay, everybody, take out your agenda. Board of Trustees, take out your agenda. And let's renumber the consent items. A is the January 25th, 21 Board of Assessors Meeting. B is January 25th, 21 Special Meeting. C is February 16th, 21 Grievance Meeting. D is February 17th, 21 BOT Meeting. E is Adopt 8 Laurel Lard as a Polling Place. And F is Adopt Community Paper Shredding Day. We are going to eliminate A and F. That make sense, everybody? Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Terrific. Okay, let's stay with the items. Trustee Gluck, you wanted to make a comment on January 25th, 2021 Board of Assessors Meeting Minutes.
I would just like to move the adoption of those minutes as, as reflected in the March 16th package that was distributed to all of us with the one change, and that is to modify the reference to final assessment role that's made into places to tentative assessment role.
Good pickup. Okay, I agree with that. So be it resolved that with the changes just suggested into the record by Trustee Gluck, to add the word tentative in front of budget in two locations, that the Board of Trustees approve the January 25th, 2021 Board of Assessors Meeting Minutes. May I have a second?
Sorry, Mayor, that was, I think that was just misstated. It is to, it has nothing to do with the budget. It's to change the reference from final assessment role to tentative assessment role.
I beg your pardon. Accepted. May I have a second? May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Paul. All right, now, Paul, what would you like to do to change the paper shredding day in terms of the resolution?
I think there was a reference to participants in the, in that resolution who were not necessarily residents. And there were some issues with regard to our code in terms of having invitations of people in our, in our, past our gates to public events. So it is simply to, it is simply to refer to the participants as our, as village residents. And to make that change into resolution. I don't have it in front of me right now.
Okay, well, I agree 100%. Let me pull up the resolution.
It was to remove two groups, I believe.
Yes, we're going to be removing two groups, so let me get to that in a minute. Okay, all right. Why don't we just start over? Because I don't have this in front of me either. And we would go-
Want me to read the resolution? I have it here.
Yes, yes, please. Thank you very much, Elizabeth.
So it be resolved that the Village of Tuxedo Park will hold a shredding event on April 22nd to acknowledge Earth Day, which will be open to Village of Tuxedo Park residents. The Board of Trustees selects, and we, I gave you a list of three vendors from the submitted list of bidders at a cost of $350 per hour with a three-hour minimum, not to exceed $1,400 for four hours. The total cost will come from budget line 1325.4, which is treasurer contractual. So you hire these people for a three-hour stint.
Understood. Okay, I accept that resolution as written. And ask for a second?
We can accept it because we're going to go over our budget line item. So it has to come out of some other area, since we've already spent $2,200 out of a line item of $2,500 expense, so it can't come out of there.
When did we know that it was, we couldn't bring it out of there? When did you know that, Alan?
When Elizabeth just read the line item number.
Oh, that's the first time you've seen it?
Well, because the total cost will come from budget line item, she said 1325.4. And it is in the resolution 1325.1. So there's a-
Yes, I'm sorry, you're right. I made a mistake there. Yeah.
We should have, after Debbie's salary and everything, we should still have about 3,700 balance in the contingency fund. And that's including the climate change and the webinar things, so we should have enough.
Thank you.
But you wanted to come out of contingency, the 1990?
Yeah, we should have enough money by the end of the year for that.
Okay, so let's change it to that place and reread that?
Read it, the whole thing?
Yes, please.
Resolve that the Village of Tuxedo Park will hold a shredding event on April 22nd to acknowledge Earth Day, which will be open to Village of Tuxedo Park residents. The Board of Trustees selects one of these bidders from the submitted list of bidders at a cost of $350 per hour with a three-hour minimum, not to exceed $1,400 for four hours. The total cost will come from budget line 1990. I think it's .4 contingency.
Okay, and when will we nail down who we're going to choose?
I think we should just pick it tonight. There's three here that are basically, basically the same. One is marginally more expensive, so we can cross them off. And then of the other two, they're really basically the same. I slightly favor one over the other because the one said, when I asked him, you know, we're booking you for three hours, if it just so happens, because I've never done it before, I don't know what the response will be. If there's a big crowd there after three hours and I still need them to stay, who could stay the extra hour?
Right.
One of them said it would not be a problem. The other one said, well, we might, we might not be able to.
All right, I think go with your gut on that.
So that was legal shred, who I would-
Go with your gut, and then they're called legal shredding?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we'll amend that resolution. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did she second that because she raised her hand?
Yes.
Okay.
Be seconded, yep. Before we vote, I just wanted to compliment you, Elizabeth, on coming up with this idea. The genesis was that when you replaced Debbie, it was a good opportunity, and as suggested by former trustee Alan Barnett, to do an office cleaning. And so we went about to do that, and of course, within the legal guidelines, you know, how, how many years do you have to save tax returns, et cetera, et cetera? We came up with crate after crate of information that could be shredded. And then Elizabeth thought of expanding it to the village as a courtesy. I think that's a terrific idea. I also agree with Paul and others on the Board that, that believe it should be restricted just to property owners, taxpayers.
And I hope that, if I could just interrupt one second, I'm sorry. I hope that everybody present will feel free to join in.
Absolutely. Anyone that's, anyone that wants to come to the village, well, I'll put out an announcement about it. But basically, we're going to let you coattail off of our shredding responsibility if you're interested. So there'll be one of these heavy-duty trucks over at the village parking lot, and I'll send out more information about it.
I just want to say one real quick thing, that we have our papers stored in one of the units over by Village Office. So if anybody can't make it that day, you are more than welcome to come and leave your boxes of paper in that area, and they'll be shredded whenever the truck comes.
Great tip. I'd like to call the roll. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Terrific, thank you very much. All right, and thank you, Board, for our first attempt at a consent agenda. We'll iron out the kinks, but I think all in all, it's a, it's a way to be more efficient when we have these things that we can throw into the pile. And I appreciate you pointing out the ones that you think we needed to debate. All right, new business. We discussed earlier the police reform plan. I'd like to propose that we accept that plan. It's due by April 1st, and without it, we would not be subject to any state grants. The long and short of the Reform Committee Plan is all about community policing. And it's been vetted and, including by the DA, the Orange County Assistant DA. And so we're excited to present it and pass it. So without further ado, I resolve to approve the Police Reform Committee Plan. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'd like to call the roll. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Gluck? Trustee McQ?
Yeah, I'm a no as a result of the tasers. And also, I, you know, I don't think it actually made a difference, but our link on our webpage did not go, go to the Police Reform Act. But I, my guess is that wouldn't have made a difference either.
I find that regretful, that you would let something like that have a, have a negative impact on the just wonderful parts of the plan that everyone in the community worked so hard on. Okay, so it passes with Trustee McQ as a no. Okay, let's move on. Okay, so there's a resolution on the table to establish a minimum number of hours for the part-time officers. As I mentioned a moment ago, this is about community policing. This is about knowing who you're dealing with, knowing how to call their name, de-escalation, and treating the community like a family and vice versa. And one of the unintended consequences we have from the transition to full, to part-time officers five or six years ago is that some of the officers are only available and only work, let's just say, one shift a month or one shift every two months. And as a result, you might get a ticket from somebody who you'll never ever see again, never had a chance to meet. And that's just not in keeping with where we want to take the department in the future. And so the chief has recommended strongly that we have a minimum, a minimum number of hours required for part-time officers. And he suggests two shifts a week. And I'm going to present that, and then we'll have some discussion. A resolution to establish, be resolved to establish a minimum hours requirement for the part-time police officers. May I have a second? Okay, any discussion?
Is this two-hour, two-eight-hour shifts a week?
Oh, no, I, I'm not, I'm not sure. What is the, whatever the chief wanted, he called it two shifts. He has a full understanding of the shift length. I don't think we went to the problem of specifying the length, but of course, you know, he's the manager and, and he knows what he means by shift. And obviously, it's in accordance with the Police Benevolent Association contract.
Trustee McQ, you're on mute.
Any other comments?
Trustee McQ is saying something, but he's on mute.
Yeah, maybe he wants to be muted.
All right, I thought it was within the bi-weekly pay period is what the chief was after.
All right, let me, let me pull up the resolution. I could certainly be wrong about that. Anybody have the resolution in front of them?
The resolution, Mayor, says two shifts per week. That's what's correct.
That's what I thought. Okay, two shifts per week. Thank you, Brian. Attorney?
If I could just make a comment. You know, I trust the chief, and he's in charge of managing his personnel. And I do find it frustrating when you call, you might ask the same question, but based on the police officer, you get, you get a different answer. And, you know, just kind of makes sense that the more they work, the more consistent they're going to be in enforcing policies for the village. I think it's, sounds like a good plan all around, but again, I trust the chief.
I'm glad to see you joined the meeting, Chris. Okay, any other comments? Okay, I'll take the, the call. All in favor?
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
Terrific. Okay, let's move on. We're making some good progress here. All right. Next on the agenda, we have a resolution to approve the removal from inventory of police surplus equipment. Resolved to approve removal from inventory of police surplus equipment. May I have a second?
Okay.
All right, guys, any questions, guys and gals?
What exactly is this surplus equipment?
This has been on the list for quite a long, over a week. This has been a delayed meeting. Come on. You know, I can't just go through all this every time you have a question. You should have- you're responsible, you're responsible for knowing this information. You've had it over two weeks. Okay, so we're going to move on. May I have a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm saying it because I don't know if we're selling it or what we're going with it.
Well, you know, be prepared.
It wasn't in the chief's, there was no memo from the chief with regard to this, so.
Well, that's not the case.
Discussion, I think that's actually a legitimate question, because it removes it from inventory, but it does not say what we're doing with it. I assume we're selling it, right?
Again, these questions should have been asked of the chief. I don't know, the chief is not here. He is with his, his father. Hopefully, to that end, everything's okay. I don't find that your question is unreasonable, but it's untimely. So we're going to move forward with this, and you've had weeks to ask these questions of the chief, and you didn't.
Well, I don't, I don't object to him asking a question because this is supposed to be debating in front of the public. But, Mr. McQ, Trustee McQ, I'll just add, these are monitors and shredders. So obviously, we should know for sure, but the assumption is that they're obsolete. And we'll probably just burn away. So I'm not really concerned what we're doing with them, but if he does, he wants them off the bulk, so I'm okay with it.
Same. Did I call a resolution? I mean, a motion on this?
Yes.
You did.
We already voted.
All in favor?
Hi.
Eyes have it. Okay, let's move on to the discussion regarding the lease renewal for the Weewa Beach. As I mentioned earlier, I know that we have Bonnie with us, and she may have comments. And so then I'll address some things I've been thinking about. So Bonnie, or a representative of your discretion, would you like to make a presentation of what you're looking to do this year?
I don't know if Bonnie may have gotten lost, or Bonnie, you're on mute, if you're still there.
That was Jennifer.
I'm here, I'm here.
All right, you guys handle it however you want. Take a few minutes and make your presentation. I know that you had requested a meeting. But I was unable to do that because of my surgery. So we might as well just discuss it here. I don't anticipate a vote this evening, but if necessary, we can hold a special meeting. But we'd love to hear your point of view and what terms you're looking for.
Bonnie, we'll off, and then Jen, turn it over to you. I just, I want to, on behalf of the club, I want to thank the trustees for working with us last year and helping us provide our members with the opportunity to join the club, you know, during the very first six months of the pandemic. And I've been in touch with the Orange County Department of Health regarding COVID-19 protocols for this year. And they feel they haven't received any new guidance from the state, but their current view, which is just an opinion, is that it would be no more stringent than last year and probably has a good chance of being less stringent than last year. So since we, I think, demonstrated our ability to conduct ourselves in accordance with the regulations that both the village and the state, you know, asked us to do and had a successful season, I'm certainly hoping that we can renew for this year. Jen, do you want to add something? Yeah, I just wanted to state a few things. We are looking for, for a lease renewal for this next season. We're looking to do this as soon as possible, because we want to do two things. We'd like to raise money for a new playground to be donated to the Weewa. And in order to do that, we have to start fundraising sooner rather than later. We no longer have a playground for the kids, and we're hoping that this summer they'll be able to return to play on a playground. So we'd like to get in front of that and start to fundraise. And the second thing we would like to do is, we have a Sunday morning yoga program that has built up a loyal following, and we would like to start that as early as possible. So we're thinking April or May, as soon as the weather gets nice enough. We would like to start Sunday yoga, and both the playground and the Sunday yoga is open, obviously, to all village residents, right? When the, the park isn't open, but the yoga, we do allow anybody who is in the village to, to participate. So I just wanted to sort of put that out there that we are looking to- So I just wanted to sort of put that out there that we are looking to run sort of a community service with respect to the yoga. And that's one of the reasons that we're looking for this renewal at this time. So.
May I ask several questions?
Absolutely.
All right, so what I've gotten so far is, you know, maybe more, but you like at least a one year term, obviously. Have you thought about the fee, for example? Over the last three, four years, you have not been able to use the swimming portion of the club, unfortunately, because of the the dam work. But now you have full access. And have you considered, have you made an offer or something of the nature in terms of what fee you'd like to suggest for the lease?
So we have it that the we were hoping to get our membership up a little higher before we talked about renewing the rent. But I think in the past, it's been approximately when we did pay, I think it was approximately $1,000 a year. But I'm not sure. I'd have to turn that over to Bonnie, since I've been on the board. We haven't paid anything, so.
So that's an open question.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if you want clarification, I can give you, you know, since I've been involved, which is over 30 years, I have, we have had years where we've paid nothing or where we've paid a dollar. That, you're right, was actually began in 2012, which was the year that not only was the lake level lowered because of pressure on the old dam, but also that was the year of the fish kill on Warwick Brook, which, as you know, flows into the Weewa. So there was a question of water quality and the village hired their own water testing company to verify. There was question as to whether anybody would be allowed to swim in the water, even the lower amount of water that year. We opened that year on the third of July for the first day. And I think the mayor at that time was Tom Wilson. And the fee was waived because we were receiving the facility was not what it had been traditionally. And for the next, so that was 2012, 13, 14, 15, and 16. There were always questions about the water level. We lost the diving board in 2012 because of the water level and have not yet been able to get that back up. And then, of course, 2017, the lake was pretty much drained. So we opened as a picnic playground facility. We only had 66 memberships that year. And the following season, 2018, the dam was still not fixed. There was no water again. And that season, we didn't open. We only opened one day, the fourth of July. And so historically, I mean, if I look at the the decade of the 2000s, we averaged 250 memberships. We lost 40 in the economic downturn of 2008. From 2007 to 2008, we lost 40 memberships. And we are now at 121 last year. And that was about half of what we would have had.
That's good. All right, so, okay, thank you for that for that information. Ladies, the I know that one of the things that was very important to me as mayor was road safety. The park was packed like never before. And one of the agreements we came to was that we would use the North Gate. And I understand that I understand it worked out very well from my perspective. I know that it was not overwhelming. In other words, there were not thousands of cars, but, you know, 18, 15, 14 cars a weekend. I thought it was very helpful. Are you willing to do that again? What is what's your general view of the North Gate?
So our preference is obviously, Mac, not to do that. I think we did circulate the car traffic report to the board in the last two weeks. If you've seen it, we average seven non-village member cars a day. And on the weekends, that average was 10 cars per day. So we would be respectfully requesting that we not have to use the the back gate. Although convenient for some of our members, it was very, very expensive for us to to man that with a full time police officer. Although I have to say, it's nice to have the police officer so close to us on the weekends. But it really, it's really averaging 10 non-village member cars per day on the weekend. And we are requesting that they could use the front gate.
Well, let's keep our fingers crossed that that increases and you get your membership back. And as I said earlier, I want to commend you. You you guys really set the standard on the COVID. We'll probably all look back on all the registrations and requirements that the government, in this case, the village board imposed, and we'll judge them for what they were at that time. But I think at the time last year, it was the right decision. And I do appreciate that you were willing to do that. Okay, so I'm going to ask the board to address Jennifer and Bonnie to see if they have any questions. And then I believe that Jim had some comments that he wanted to address. So why don't we, Jim, actually, why don't we bring you in now briefly before we open it up to the board members?
Jay Rice, right?
I'm so sorry, Jay. Excuse me.
Oh.
There you are. I apologize. I called you Jim. I'm sorry, Jim.
I didn't take it personally. I thought you were talking about somebody else.
It's the opioids.
Well, if you if you need help getting rid of them.
No, actually, I'm not on any. Thanks. Oh, I see what you mean.
No, I mean, that was, I mean, that was pretty much it. I mean, I want to push very much in favor of 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 opening. And I'll leave it at that.
Terrific. I did gather some information from people in the village that had some suggestions I'll bring up now. These were just, I'm just sharing information I was given. This does not represent my position or the position of any other board member. People were suggesting to raise the fee. Some suggested five to 10 grand. In retrospect, that's probably very unlikely because of the financial situation. But people, I guess the general point is people want to raise the fee from a dollar. The other thing is that, which I thought was interesting, was using the facility when the Weewa Beach Club is not open. So, for example, the hours of the Weewa Beach Club are currently one to eight, I believe. And so the question has arisen from from residents, well, great, can I use it at nine o'clock and go swimming? And we explored this briefly last year. And we looked into the insurance issues and liability issues. And we had a preliminary discussion about it, but nothing, nothing thorough. And I thought that was interesting. As you know, there's a lot of people in the park that feel that they should have exclusive use of the of the Weewa Beach Club and so forth. And so I wanted to present that as an idea, as a compromise to the situation. But again, we'll let the, you know, that'll be part of the discussion because I I represent people that have brought that to my attention.
Matt.
Yes, yes, Jennifer.
So I just, I want to respond slightly. So if we don't have to use the back gate, I think I would be, I I think, and obviously, this would have to pass the board, we'd be amenable to some kind of increased rent, right? So I think for us, it's it's that the the back gate is is exceptionally expensive for us to run. So I would like to put that out there that we're not, you know, beyond paying our fair share to the village, right? And with respect to running the facility, when when there is, when we're not operating, we've had hours at at one to eight, partially because of where the the water level has been and partially because it doesn't get used that much before noon, really. However, again, if we don't have to use the back gate, I think that we would also be amenable to extending those hours. What what we do struggle with is that we're not sure that the Department of Health would actually allow a swim at your own risk.
Right.
We hold the permit, so we we have concerns about that. But I think that that if if we didn't have to use the back gate, we we could extend our hours. And obviously, we we pay for the staff to be there, right? Which would give us increased hours before, maybe even after, although we're not allowed to swim after sunset. So evening swimming at nine o'clock is sort of off the table from the Department of Health, not.
And it's the best time to swim.
I know.
All right, so I'll go around the horn. Trustee Gluck, do you have any comments, questions that you'd like to bring to the table?
Well, sure. I mean, I'd like to join others who's commending the the beach club for the fantastic job they did last year from a, starting from zero and getting up to 60 miles an hour in a in a difficult period and operating under those COVID restrictions. And I went down there a few times and it was just, it was just wonderful to see how it operated and hear the the kids laughing and splashing in that in that jewel of a resource that the village has there. So I'm very much in favor of of getting this open again, you know, and having them operate again this year. You know, in terms of getting that in the in the weeds a little bit. You know, I wasn't a big fan of of using the North Gate last year. I'm not, I mean, I think the traffic, the traffic numbers that we have bear out that it doesn't add all that much, if anything. In terms of the fee, I think we have a budgeted amount in terms of revenues in in this year's budget for the beach club. And I think it's $1,000, but I'm not, you know, don't don't hold me, don't hold me to that. So I hope we can get it together. I'm in in favor of a in favor of, oh, swimming, yes. Swimming, I think we have to look at that separately. I think there are some significant issues with that.
Technically, I agree with you. I think they they should be looked at separately. They're not mutually exclusive. But it's an interesting point that was brought up. Anything else before I move to trustee McQ?
No, that's that's mine.
Thank you. Trustee McQ.
I actually, I echo a lot of Paul's comments commending the Weewa Beach Club. I don't, I tend to agree, 10 cars coming through the North Gate doesn't justify the police presence there. And especially if O and R is doing phase two. And they use that as a staging area. I think that would be problematic on a couple of different levels. And it's not something we had last year when the Weewa Beach Club was open till the fall. So I would echo that. I believe we did use $1,000 in this year's budget for the fee for the Weewa Beach Club for this upcoming years, what we put in the budget. That doesn't mean it, that's the right number. That's just what we put as a marker. But we put it that way, and it obviously is up to negotiation. So that that would be me.
Terrific. Thank you. Trustee Caster.
Sure, thank you. As as a new trustee, I I hope you can be patient with with me. And let me ask a couple of questions for background. I haven't seen the lease or drafted the lease. If it's out there, I'm sorry, it's just buried in the 100 pages that we got that Elizabeth so diligently put together for us. But what are what are the dates? We we talk about years. We know it for this year. Is it a year long lease or is it just for the summer?
So I can answer that. So generally speaking, if we get up and running on time, the dates would be Memorial Day weekend or the beginning somewhere in May. Obviously, we'd be looked as, we would be looking to start yoga earlier. But again, as I mentioned, we have a resident policy where we open that to everybody. So so we would be looking to start yoga prior to that date. We could add that to the lease. And the lease expires usually the 15th of September. And the rest of the year, it reverts to to the village.
Okay, and then, perfect. Thank you. That was one of my other questions. So it's full village resident use all year round, with the exception of the time, Memorial Day to about September 15th, correct? Okay, and then.
Trustee Caster, can I jump in for a second?
Yeah, of course, please.
Bit of a misconception that that some the Weewa Park, right, the area from the traffic gate, right, is into residents all year round. I, so it's it's not the the lease or license that the that the beach club has, isn't an exclusive license.
Okay.
As as a matter of practicality, you know, I I think it's interpreted to mean that a resident can't walk onto the beach during the swimming season and swim if they're not a member of the of the Weewa Beach Club. That's just as, that just is strongly discouraged despite what the, you know, the technicalities of the agreement might say. So that, so the park is is always open to village residents.
Okay.
As a village park.
Okay, thank you. That was going to be one of my other questions, too. So and then, Jennifer, you had mentioned the permit with the DEC. That's the first time I've heard that. Can you elaborate on what that entails?
This is Bonnie. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's the Department of Health, not not D E C, D O H. And so that any permitted swimming facility in Orange County receives their permit from the Orange County Department of Health. And it's governed by the State Sanitary Code. It talks about the level of training your lifeguards have to have and all those kinds of things. How many bathers are allowed, depending on your roped off area, how many bathers would be allowed in at one time? What the water depth has to be under a diving board or under a raft? I mean, there's all kinds of regulations. But that's that's the State Sanitary Code, and the permit is issued by the Orange County Department of Health.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Is there a fee for that?
It's a $200 fee to apply for your permit.
Okay.
Yeah, Bonnie, there's testing fees too, right, to test the water?
No, they don't charge it. Well, the the couple of summers where there was questions, people on the Lakes Committee, I guess, were taking samples. And sometimes people on the Lakes Committee were paying for those rush tests. But no, we don't incur testing fees. One time we did because the department, the inspector did a visual and he was concerned. And we had to get water tested right away before he would allow swimming. That was, I believe, during that summer of 2012 that the lake had been reduced so dramatically. And there was the other question from Warwick Brook. But as as a rule, no, we do not pay a lot of testing fees.
Okay, thank you.
We are also inspected pretty regularly throughout the season. It's not just a a single inspection. They go away and let us do our thing, like we're we're under their their rules and regulations for the duration of the season, and they do come and inspect.
Right, the first inspection is pre-operational to make sure that all your ropes are properly set and your water depth markings are correct and that kind of thing. And then they do two to three unannounced visits during the season to see that you're operating to code.
Thank you. Trustee Caster, do you have further questions?
Yep, just I'm almost done. You mentioned setting the ropes. Who does that?
The beaches maintenance person.
Okay, that who's paid or is a member of the club?
He's a paid employee, yes. And then last year, we had a couple of village residents, actually, who are good swimmers get in there and help us because it was a, you know, we we didn't have a lot of time between getting the approvals and wanting to open. So we we relied on some volunteer effort as well.
Okay, and I think this is my last question. So does the village DPW do anything for the beach club or specifically the beach?
Yes, they mow the the grass. And if there's a tree, you know, sometimes after storms, we'll have tree branches that are dangling or something like that. Last year, we had a tree that completely fell over, so they they do come. It's beach, it's village property, so they do that kind of tree removal, just as they would on any piece of village property, I'm presuming, where people, you know, would be picnicking and that kind of thing.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Terrific.
Thank you very much, actually.
Trustee Shaw? Trustee Shaw, your microphone is off. You mean, there you go.
Yeah, yeah. No, no questions. I would like to discuss with Brian about, you know, swimming off hours. I got a different feeling from him that it was okay to do as long as we had signage and stuff, so.
Yes, that would be certainly required. But I do agree with trustee Gluck that there, you know, they don't, one can be decided before the other. Okay.
I'd like to, if I could, make a comment.
I'm sorry, who is it?
Stu McGregor.
Oh, hi. Oh, hi, Stu. Howard, by the way, I enjoyed the way you were sipping and enjoying your wine, red wine recently.
Well, I didn't, I didn't do that.
You were tasting it, sniffing it. It's not the way I drink wine, but I'm very impressed.
Well, it wasn't until you had your beer there, I think, that I decided to do it.
That will come shortly.
First, I will be brief, but first of all, I just want to compliment you and the board living here in Coral Gables in Florida. Because we are only there basically from the middle of May until October, middle of October, although we've been residents for over thirty years. And of course, I've lived here all my life. So I think as a family member, it's probably seventy-six years as a member of the Weewaw Beach Club. But just some perspective, and I know we're dealing with the lease. I think, you know, for the last sixty years or so, the can has been kicked down the road for various issues that there's no need to get into. But of course, I think it's imperative that the Weewaw Beach Club open. Certainly, the lease charge is going to be a very major part of how this all works out in terms of what the revenues are to the Weewaw Beach Club as opposed to the expenses that they do use. And of course, you know, having lived in the village for such a long time and knowing so many people that are in the village and outside the village, there is, there is a, issues that come up from time to time. I think it's imperative that we resolve the issue with respect to the lease, hopefully favorably for the Weewaw Beach Club as quick as we can this year. And secondly, that perhaps we take a look for the long term before this comes up every year. Simply because I refer to that area as Pigeon Point, which was the original name of it. It is a critical and wonderful area, as most of you know. And at one time was the Beach Club for the Tuxedo Club. Second, and I say this for everyone on the phone, there is nothing, I think, that I recall more than when I first had to go out on a diving board and jump ten feet into the lake. Were very hesitant to do it. When I came up, it was incredible.
Say how old you were.
Well, I was probably seven years old when I did it. But all three of my sons, the next incredible part was when my sons did that and I saw the look on their face and, of course, myself when they did it. It's an incredible area and the village of Tuxedo Park does not have an active park. Now, you know, many of the people in the village that would like to see this exclusively as a village asset, of course, when you start to talk about, well, a Department of Parks and Recreation and putting that into a budget somehow and improving it beyond the means which the Weewaw Beach Club has, doesn't seem feasible. So I would suggest that we get through the leasing process, hopefully with a very, a very long lease for this year, which where we may still be suffering some COVID. Explore the possibilities that Jennifer and Bonnie didn't bring up as far as guests because we realized during this summer, obviously with COVID, we would still have guests, but we could not utilize the Beach Club, well, we remember. And then lastly, I would, I would happy to be part of, but there should be someone, I think, or a group that you possibly could put together to study where we go with this pigeon park and how we deal with it in the future. So, you know, that's my, that's my comment for tonight.
Yep, thank you very much. I think there's other open items, like you mentioned, membership, guests and things of that nature, which we can discuss. But I think we had a very productive, broad discussion this evening. And, you know, the trustees will discuss it. I'll be available now that I'm back on an armored schedule to Jen and Bonnie. And we'll see what we can get done. And I agree, you know, we don't have to resolve the issue of us potentially swimming without a lifeguard before we do this lease.
Thank you.
That's my personal view. I'm only speaking for myself, but that's that. So before I close the discussion, is there anybody else that would like, from the board or the audience, would like to make any quick comment? Okay, Bonnie and Jennifer and Mr. Citron, Stuart, Jay, thank you very much, we appreciate it. All right, so now, next on the item, the agenda, excuse me, we have a boathouse that the trustees are considering. It is formally to resolve, to approve the building permit for the Rifkin Boathouse located at ninety-seven West Lake Road, section one oh three, block one, lot forty-two. The trustees were distributed the drawings. The application has been through the appropriate process, starting with the building inspector. It has received full bar approval. And it has received a required variance from the BZA. And so before they can move forward and meet the obligations of the DEC and other permits that they have to deal with and bureaucracy they have to go through, they've come to the Board of Trustees to approve the permit. And so I would like to go around the horn here and see if there's any comments or questions. I see that we have the Rifkins on, so number one, welcome. And number two, you know, we're happy to involve you in the conversation. I'm just gonna go around the horn first and see, see what kind of reactions we have. How about trustee Gluck?
Sure. Just, you know, I love technical points, so, technical points. One, I think the proposal is phrased in terms of the trustees approving the building permit for the, you know, for the public house. I don't think that's what we do. I think the building permit has other aspects to it that are squarely within John, but with jurisdiction. And so what we are doing is simply, maybe not so simply, but our, our job is whether or not to approve, you know, to approve the boathouse under, I think it has section sixty-five of the village code. And as the trustees know, I asked some questions about that to John. Responses, and it seems to me, though, that one element that is, that is, that is required here and is not presently in front of us and probably could be put in front of us without a great deal of difficulty is the requirement that there has to be some, some showing that the construction or rebuilding will not endanger the water supply or otherwise be detrimental to the village's environment. So I don't think we have a report on that yet from the village engineer or perhaps from the applicants' engineers. But I would, I would think that would be something that I think would be appropriate to have in the file before we, before we approve this.
Anything else?
That's it.
Oh, okay, thank you. Trustee McHugh.
Actually, my issues, I agree with Paul and I guess I'm gonna address my question more to Brian because I'm a little bit lost if all we're meant to do is opine on whether or not, if it doesn't have adverse effect on Tuxedo Lake, if that's the, that's the only bar we have to look at, which is my reading of the code. But I just want to confirm that is the case. So Brian, would you be able to opine on that?
Yeah, so.
Sorry, did you hear? I might have been on mute. I wasn't understanding.
We weren't able to hear you, which saves us about thirty-five dollars, I think.
So I don't understand the part of it when you're saying in regard to Tuxedo Lake. How would, what is your concern and how it would impact Tuxedo Lake?
I think that's the metric we have to use with regard to approving this. I think as we, as the Board of Trustees, that is the bar that we're being asked to measure this against. You agree or disagree?
I don't know that there's an impact. I mean, that's, I don't know, I'm not understanding what your concern is when you say.
All right, let me find it. David, if you wouldn't mind jumping to somebody else, I'll find the code.
Yeah, no problem. I think maybe at this point, we'll, we'll bring in John just to give us a brief background of the process of the application and where it stands right now. John, are you available for that?
Yes, I am, thank you. The application started with a building permit for demolition and reconstruction of the house. And then it changed slightly to include the rebuilding of a boathouse. There was documentation provided to the previous owner that there was sufficient proof that a boathouse once existed in this approximate location. And they would have approval going forward to rebuild the boathouse. The Rifkins wanted to take advantage of that, that permission. They submitted a site plan. The site plan did show that obviously they needed permission to build within a hundred feet of Tuxedo Lake. I referred them to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Board of Zoning Appeals looked at this application. It was approved, I believe, by a vote of four to one. Then the application went to the Board of Architecture Review for review of the architecture. And the BAR did approve the architectural component of this application approximately two weeks ago. There are some items that typically would be submitted after the BAR approves of an application that would include a construction documents, also any protection measures relative to the house and the boathouse. And the applicant and the architect have acknowledged they need to submit those documents, but I have not received them yet. Also, as we're discussing tonight, in accordance with the village code, any boathouse needs approval from the village board.
Okay.
And that's where we stand tonight.
Trustee McHugh?
Sorry, so the section I was looking at on the code is sixty-five dash two, which is the applicant has demonstrated to the satisfaction of the Board of Trustees that the construction or rebuilding will not endanger the water supply or otherwise be detrimental to the village's environment. That, that is the only consideration we should have with regard to this. Is that correct, Brian?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think everything else is covered by what John said, those other issues about dates and, you know, pre-existing are all covered in the application process. When it gets to you, that's the criteria that the board has.
Okay, because my concern was, and I think it's stunning structure what they're proposing, but my concern is the massing of it's totally different from other boathouses on the lake. And that's my, was a concern of mine. That being said, that's none of my business. The only thing I should be ruling on is the specific section sixty-five point two, so I support it.
Come on, up here, up here, come on, up here.
Okay, trustee Caster.
Just in lines with what trustee Gluck and trustee McHugh said, right now, and John Ludwig, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the applicant hasn't demonstrated anything as far as assurances that the rebuilding will not endanger the water supply. I mean, we don't have any documents from engineers or construction managers. And if that's the only thing we're voting on, I think we have to have that piece of paper in front of us with that assurance for us to do our duties.
For the record, I would agree with that. There should always be some statement from somebody that the applicant is meeting that requirement of the code. Other, it's not something saying that you, as the board, review it. It says the applicant has demonstrated to the satisfaction of the board that the rebuilding will not endanger the water supply. So that indicates in the code, there needs to be some presentation to satisfy the board.
Right, and I do want to commend the Rifkins on getting through the bar, getting through the BZA and getting it up to us. And I have full faith and confidence that once we get the required documentation and John Ludwig gives us a thumbs up, that we'll be able to move forward. But I'm personally not comfortable doing that until we see that.
I have a different take. The number one protection of the lake is one of our regulations, which says that you can't make construction within a hundred feet, a hundred yards of the lake. And that was studied by the BZA and determined that they would give a variance to allowing the construction to take place on the water. And whether they considered or not, I'm not sure. But obviously, they're not going to approve the variance if they feel that approving the variance is going to pollute the lake. So as far as I'm concerned, the fact that they got the variance for the one fifty, combined with the approval of materials and construction methods from the bar, including approval from the bar engineer, implicitly tells me that all concerns about constructing on the lake are satisfied. And I would not require any additional information. And I also believe that John, our building inspector, would not bring it to the Board of Trustees if he was concerned and he's been there the entire process, that there was a risk to the lake. So as far as I'm concerned, we have enough information in front of us to satisfy our role, which is to say that we're not concerned that this is gonna affect the lake. And, you know, that's where I stand. John, you're welcome. If you disagree with something I've said, you're welcome to comment. And other than that, I'll move it over to Tinka and see what her thoughts are. Tinka, do you have any thoughts?
You just muted yourself.
Okay, you're on mute? There you go.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, we have the BZA for a reason. We have the bar for a reason and we have the planning board for a reason. If we thought that they were terrible at their jobs, why the heck would we have them? Then we would revert it all back to somebody else. I think that they have been diligent in both of those boards. And I don't see what the problem is because everything that goes through the bar, you have to present whatever, construction plans and then they approve it. But, you know, without the approval from the board, why the heck would the Rifkins go through all that process and spend all that money and then come back and say, oh, by the way, no, we are not gonna go that way? Anyway, I just think we have, we have the bar for a reason. We have the BZA for a reason and the planning board wasn't necessary. And I don't know why we're second guessing this thing. It's.
Can I make a suggestion, Brian? If, if John were to produce a letter during this meeting stating that his, to his satisfaction, there is not going to be any damage to the current plans to the lake, would that be satisfactory if it was before the trustees and then potentially vote this evening?
Yeah, so let me just first say, and I'm not, you know, suggesting by the language in the code that we're, you know, clearly there's a review for a reason. But I think to the points that were made by you and trustee Shaw, if that were true, then we wouldn't need this code provision at all or this review by the village board. In other words, we'd be saying, in surplus, and it shouldn't even be there. Why come to the Board of Trustees since you have nothing to offer and you're leaving everything to your other boards? However, having said that, yeah, in my experience, and I can't remember the application, but I thought I saw another one where this provision was addressed. And when it came to the board, the statement was there. It doesn't say it has to be an engineer. It doesn't say it has to be anyone in particular. It just clearly says that the applicant has to demonstrate to the satisfaction of the board that the construction or rebuilding will not endanger the water supply or otherwise be detrimental to the village's environment. And then, of course, it says, and they have obtained the other approvals. So the other approvals are part of that sentence, but that part's done. So, you know, it could be a statement referring to all the other approvals and saying, as you can see from the ZBA and the other boards we've been through, you know, there is no endangerment to the water supply. So we're not looking for some necessarily new information because it's been addressed thoroughly. But if you want to satisfy your code and your responsibility, that's how it's worded. Whether we need it or not, you know, that's a matter of amendment of law.
So may I suggest, before, before, yes, please, Dan.
May I speak up for a second? And I'm, I'm.
May I speak up for a second, and I'm sorry to interrupt. First of all, you know, thank you to to the board for giving us the opportunity to. To present this evening. In listening to all the thoughtful comments, there's one thing I think in the application that that's been missed. And that is that there is still another approval that we need. We do still need to go to the DEC, which I believe is the final authority on on this. And we have to present to them. You know, plans for making sure that there's no detrimental effect on the water. You know, look, we live here, we live on the water, and, you know, we drink that water too. So we are very much concerned with water quality here. Just as everybody else on this call is is too. So, you know, once we get the approval here from the village board of trustees. So once we have all of our municipal approvals, we do still have to go to the DEC. And they have to. Approve plans for what we're going to do during the construction phase. To make sure that there is no detrimental impact on the water. So I'm certainly not an expert on this. But I'm. Virtually certain that we'll have to install booms and remove water from the area, just like the club did when they rebuilt their boathouse a number of years ago. And I believe, just like. Mr. Bruno did when he was taking down the existing boathouse that that was on that property. I believe those booms stayed in the water. For quite some time after that boathouse came down. So there is a whole other process to go through beyond. You know, the Board of Trustees here, and I think that that's probably where, you know, we need to to have those plans available.
Thank you, Dan. My my, I would be satisfied with a letter crafted by. John and Brian Village Attorney this evening. That within fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes from now, they can present back. Which says to us, based on the approval process to date. They're satisfied that there will be no be, there will not be any detrimental harm caused to the lake. I would be satisfied with that. I would be satisfied with something crafted from the Rifkins in a similar manner. I don't know about my colleagues.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion?
But I'm about to hear from our village attorney.
I know, based on on Mr. Rifkin's comments and the necessity for the DEC approval. What the, and this is just an option, the village board could approve this. Contingent on, you know, an approval from the DEC, since that would obviously address the endangerment concerns. You this way, the Rifkins wouldn't have to come back to the village board, but it would be an approval. DEC would see that, that it would be contingent on their approval, and then once that's attained, then it can move forward.
Yeah, that that was my third option.
I like your third option best.
You said it better than I will ever say it. So let me just go around. If this were, yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Sheila Tralons, I'm chairman of the Board of Architectural Review.
Ah, let's get down to the nitty gritty.
And I just wanted to just step in for a moment to say that all of our approvals. Were with the understanding, as Mr. Rifkin said, that we would all give our approvals, and that this is one of the most diligent applicants applicants that I have ever. Had the pleasure of reviewing an application from. And we were very comfortable that they had met all of the requirements. And that when it was coming to you, just as it came to us, there would be a conditional approval, for instance, that we were very happy with the aesthetics that were presented both by the. The residents proposed and by the boathouse, subject to the board, the village. Board of the Board of Trustees approval and the DEC approval, and we thought you two would do, and certainly it's your option, but you two would give a conditional approval. Subject to the DEC approval. And allow them to move forward.
Right.
So.
Your input is greatly appreciated. All right, so why don't I suggest, Brian, do you mind? Thank you so much, Sheila. Brian, do you mind crafting up something to that effect? Contingent on the DEC? You need to unmute.
Are you looking to do that tonight?
Do you do you mind crafting something? That would allow the trustees to vote this evening. And that vote would be contingent on DEC approval, as Sheila suggested, that process that we're going through, so they don't have to come back to the board. And I'd be satisfied with that, and I think probably the the board would be happy to vote on that.
You're on mute.
You're on mute, trustee McHugh.
And Alan McHugh is muted.
Sorry, I apologize. Who's mandating that the Rifkins have to get DEC approval?
This is Jeff DeGraas, DeGraas of the Hahn Architects. John Ludwig cannot issue a building permit without that DEC approval, so any structure that's built on a waterway like that is required by the state to have DEC approval. So there's no way that this this application could even ever get built if the DEC did not approve it. It's not something that, like we just sort of said, let's go to the DEC, it's actually a requirement. So it's just part of the process that we obviously will be going through, and it's a long process by the DEC. It's going to take quite a few months and quite a few reviews. So they will address things about the water supply. Any of the surrounding environment on the shoreline. So there will be a lot of oversight on this as well. And again, John can't issue the building permit unless that is procured by the DEC.
So, thank you, Jeff. So the wording of our resolution is incorrect, as Paul pointed out. It shouldn't say approve the building permit. It should be a conditional approval to move the the application forward. And towards a final approval by John, and John can't authorize that approval until the DEC approves. So. Again, I think that just reinforces what I'm trying to achieve here. Brian, can you write up something for us?
Is that resolution in the package?
I think we need, okay, so you need some base information. Is there a resolution in the package, Elizabeth?
I don't think so.
Okay, so. We would be starting from scratch on that, and I do have, I did read the lot number and those kinds of things, if you're interested in that.
Yeah, I mean.
You're muted. There you go.
My unmute's not working so well. I can work on something in the background if, you know, somebody can email some details.
Yeah, can I can I recommend that you and John get on the cell phone?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. And. We will come back to this. And hopefully have something before us that we all feel comfortable voting on. So that said.
Mayor, sorry.
Yes.
Sorry, just just a question for for Brian, please. Because I have not heard of this. I have not wandered into at least this DEC requirement for building on on shorefront. Is that something you're familiar with, Brian?
Not specifically. I mean, I know there are regulations, and I believe they apply to construction on the lake itself.
Yeah, because we're a reservoir is the.
Yeah.
We're a reservoir, so they are involved. There's no chagrinery here.
I mean, I can look into it. I don't know if there's a specific regulation for it.
Surprising, not having run into that regulation previously. But we can, we can discuss that offline. No sense taking up time now.
Okay, so we're going to move forward, and the Rifkins, I would, and Jeff, please, please hold on. We'll get back to you before the meeting's over. Okay, so next item. AF, David Hoogler, who is the Orange County District Attorney. Donated to the Village of Tuxedo Park Police Department for the purchase of two body worn cameras valued at $1,000. And the chief recommends that we send. David a thank you note. And so without objection. I'd like to do that. May I have a second? All in favor? All in favor? Eyes have it. Thank you. Okay, next, we have this issue of the MWG Vision Plan. And I think Paul brought up some very good points in in discussing this with Tinka. About whether or not we should be researching this. My question, I guess, is is trustee Gluck, is it too late to do that for this version, and should we sign it? Or should we hold off now and wait till we do more research?
Well, I think the I think the. Resolution on the table just relates to the to the vision plan. Which is, you know, which is, I think, pretty, pretty basic. The discussion Tink and I were having by email really related to the. To the health plan generally, which I don't think has to be approved before. Before our next meeting, so it'd be useful to have that research done, that conversation with.
So so we should, really what you're saying is we should meet this deadline for the vision aspect of the plan tonight and give me the authority design.
Yes.
Okay, so. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the mayor to renew the MWG Vision Plan. May I have a second?
Second.
All in flavor?
Hi.
Oh, god damn it. Turn.
Oops.
Man down.
All right, Tinka, you're on.
Get to take your vote.
Hi.
Next item.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, she's stepping in.
Yeah.
Ready to go to executive session, right?
Yep, exactly. Want to start, want me to start putting everybody into executive session?
Well, we. We gotta make a motion.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah. Tinka, do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll try my best. Make the motion that we. Enter the executive session to discuss two separate village employees and an Article seventy eight litigation.
Second.
Question and and to add to get some legal advice.
Okay, and to get some legal advice.
And that's four O I.
Yeah, four yay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, resolved to enter executive session.
Elizabeth, are you waiting for the mayor to?
No, I'm trying to put people into into the breakout room.
Right.
Is that okay?
Yeah, you'll stand by in case the mayor appears.
I always stay here, yeah.
Thank you.
So he got dropped. He's going to try to get back in. Okay, that's fine.
Is she on?
Elizabeth?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, hi, Mac is in the waiting room, I guess, is he?
I'm sorry, you just, it just takes a second, sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I just saw the breakout room now.
Yeah, okay, I really apologize for that technical difficulty. And so refresh me where we were, folks.
We we resolved to enter executive session to discuss.
We're there already?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone, for participating. There will be some resolutions when we return, so you're welcome to stick around. Thank you.
I think I'll read about him in the funny papers. Have a good night, everyone.
Bye, thanks for coming.
Sorry, I went to the bathroom. Oh.
[inaudible]
Therefore, be it resolved by the Village of Tuxedo Park as follows. Section one. The above whereas clauses are incorporated herein by reference as if set forth fully. Section two. The Village Board of Trustees hereby approves the construction of the Rifka Boathouse under Village Code. Section sixty five dash two D. Conditioned upon approval of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and compliance with any conditions set forth in the approvals of the Board of Zoning Appeals. in the approvals of the Board of the Zoning Appeals and Board of Architecture Review. Section three, the Board hereby authorizes the building inspector or any other official in the employee or employees directed by the mayor to take any and all actions necessary to carry out the provisions of this resolution. Section four, this resolution shall be effective immediately. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll call the roll. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Before we move on to another topic, I just wanted to mention to the Rifkins and to their architect, what a successful project I think this is. I'm really excited. As an architect, I'm excited, and also as a mayor, I'm excited. I think it's going to be a terrific addition to the park. And being a boater myself, I'm looking forward to the invitation over to the Rifkin House for some cocktails. Thank you. You're welcome, and thanks for your patience. All right, so let's move on, and we have in front of us a resolution. Before I get there, let me ask Elizabeth what she had to was commenting on.
I was just gonna ask you about the motion to leave executive session. Who made it and who seconded?
Yeah, we could do that not in the middle of a resolution. The it was McQ, seconded by who?
Maybe it was me.
Seconded by Tink.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so.
Sorry, sorry, too. Whoever was recording the vote on the last resolution, I think, recorded McQ as a yes. I think he's abstaining because he's on the phone.
I didn't record him as a yes. I did record myself as a yes.
I'll reflect that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Paul. All right, so now that we've come out, we have a resolution regarding canceling the DPW truck purchase at a cost of one ninety three, four nine five point eight eight in favor of her truck not to exceed one hundred fifty thousand dollars. This is actually let let's can we pull up the resolution itself? And I'll go right to that since this is some, you know, isn't like a new resolution.
This for the truck?
Yes.
Okay, I can pull it up.
Thank you.
Give me a momento. Truck resolution should be this one.
Okay, terrific. All right, I'm gonna skip the whereas and.
You know what? I think that's the old one, Mayor, isn't it?
Pardon me?
I think that's the old one. I believe so, right?
I mean, the old one with the accurate number.
Yeah, this is the old one. Let me see if I can pull up the new one.
Because the new one had the the old number, one ninety.
I definitely have it here, Chuck.
We have Meg and John. How you guys doing?
Hang it in there.
Oh, my God. I hope you're watching TV or something.
Actually started writing the meeting while you guys were in the executive session.
That's really good. That's a great use of your time.
It'll save me time tomorrow.
Okay, now, when I get to the number, I'm gonna I am gonna read. All right, I'll I'll read some. Resolution authorizing purchase of replacement of DPW truck and cancellation of a previously ordered DPW truck and snowplowing equipment. Whereas the village previously approved the order for a freight liner, eight, one zero eight five D four by four with ten foot steel body, eleven foot reversible plow and stainless steel standard for one ninety four. The actual cost is different. It's one nine four. Where's my stupid? Thing. The original resolution you pulled up, Brian, had the correct number. This one reverted back to the old number. Do you have the correct number? It's one nine four and change.
One eighty three, four ninety five, eighty eight.
Yes, adopted freight liner truck within the two thousand twenty twenty one budget. And I will now skip the rest of the whereas. I just wanted to get that one accurate. Oh, excuse me, there's one more. Whereas the village is in receipt of a proposal from Reed Systems Limited of Ellenville, New York for a replacement vehicle at a price of seventy thousand, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Village of Tuxedo Park as follows. Section one, the whereas clauses are incorporated herein by reference as if set forth fully. Section two, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute documents to carry out the cancellation of the freight liner truck and snowplowing equipment by signing the cancellation document provided by Rick Woods of M V Freightliner, attachment A, and payment of a twenty five hundred dollar fee arising from such cancellation. Section three, the Board hereby authorizes the mayor to execute any and all documents required to purchase the replacement vehicle and equipment identified in the proposal of Reed Systems Limited dated March twenty third, two thousand twenty one for a price not to exceed seventy thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. Section four, this resolution shall be effective immediately. May I have a second?
This is Chris.
Hi, Chris, seconded. Discussion, please. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Caster and Gluck.
And Shaw.
No, Gluck Gluck did not vote aye.
Did you vote?
No, nay.
Oh, you're a nay. Okay, sorry. Trustee McQ.
He's not voting, I guess.
Oh, right, he's not on the phone. Well, I will. I, okay, so that's one nay, two yeses. I will vote in this case and say aye. So the ayes have it. Now, I just want to say on this regard, you know, we had this was put into the last year's budget. At the time, we didn't have certain information we have now. Everyone is very well intentioned on this. And I appreciate everyone's patience and understanding to assist in making this revision. And it will be beneficial to us. And I want to thank trustee McQ and Gluck and everyone else that put a lot of effort into getting this original truck specified and say thank you.
All right. Can I say one one thing, Mayor? I just want to add one comment. Here, this truck is to replace two trucks that have already been turned in, and just the fact that we handle that we have none of the trucks, the one that we're building and the two that were turned in, obviously DPW did a phenomenal job. Heavy snowstorm this winter, and I also want to that, you know, we we had some expert consulting deciding on what type of truck to use. Obviously, we're saving the village a lot of money here, and we're still gonna have the same capability that we were seeking to have in the first place.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so let's see, folks. What do we have next on the agenda? Anything? Oh, yes, we have the the resolution for Elizabeth. Elizabeth, we need information regarding the end of the term in relationship to when Debbie's term ends as well as the reorg meeting that's coming up in a couple of months. So we're just gonna table this for now, and we will take care of it shortly. So is there any other bit or that matters that have come before the board?
No, I just wanted to double check if we did resolve to renew the M W G vision plan, because that's when you.
Yes, I was given the authority to sign. And there is one more item, actually. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Movie?
We have. Well, no, that's table. We the the issue in hand is the Bruno extension. So I know. Oh, did I just read that? No, so we have to just see I'm fading out. I've been my art, my legs been.
All right, Mayor, if you want, I'll state the resolution and somebody can make it.
Thank you.
So it would be a motion authorize the mayor to execute an extension of the two thousand fifteen memorandum of agreement with Michael Bruno and Alexander Jackowick through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty one, in a form approved by council.
I'll adopt that resolution. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Trustee Cluck?
Aye.
Ah, the ayes have it. Okay, terrific. Any other business that anyone would like to?
Yeah.
No special meeting?
Yes, trustee Gluck.
Oh, thank you. So we have, I think there was a reference to at least scheduling one meeting, special meeting next week for for what? I can't remember what it was for now.
Oh, it was a request by a resident to for the village trustees to make an exemption to the law, local law, and approve a movie production.
And in addition to that, I do believe that the deadline for trustee action on a on a budget, proposed budget is March thirty one, which is one week from today. So I'm not sure what.
Oh, that's a great idea. We now, do you do you want to have a meeting for the presentation or just distributed by then?
I I think the legal requirement is for the Board of Trustees to approve a budget by that time, so.
I think it's a presentation of the tentative budget.
Presentation by the thirty first.
Presentation of the tentative budget by the thirty first. Now, just to let you know, we're looking good. I I think we'll have this nailed down by Friday.
Well, sorry, yeah, presentation filing is by the twentieth of March, which we know we're whatever slightly behind, but then it'll go to the board. And by that should happen, technically, the clerk presents it to the board by the thirty first. And then you're free to meet and make changes, do whatever you want, and until you set the public hearing, which has to be set on or before April fifteenth or open.
Now, so if you want, I mean, we should probably make the special meeting schedule now, Paul, is what you're suggesting?
Yep.
And then we can follow up at the special meeting with a with a date for the first meeting regarding budget. How's that sound?
Sure.
Okay, all right. What's everyone's schedule next week to discuss this proposal by a resident to for approval by the trustees to have a movie production at their residence? How's everyone's schedule? I would like to do it later in the week because I'd like to. I have a bunch of information I'm looking for. I'd like to have in front of me before we schedule. I mean, before we have a vote. So I prefer towards the end of the week. Does anyone recall what the actual deadline is that the resident is dealing with?
Oh, I don't know. I don't. Was that in the?
I'm not sure. I know there was an interest in getting it resolved.
Right.
As quickly as possible, but it was too late to make tonight's meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, are you looking, Chris?
I was looking at my calendar.
Okay, um. Okay, hmm. Let's set a can we? Is it possible, Brian, to set two dates and then go back to one of them, or is that not?
It's feasible. Pick one.
Or should we? Yeah, can we? Can we schedule it for next Thursday, maybe, or something like that? And then if it's sooner, no, I guess we can't come back. How many days notice do we need, Brian?
There really isn't a technically a limit. If it's if it's a more than a week in advance, then you need seventy two hours notice. If you're having it less than a week from now, then you would just need to send it to the paper, post it on the board, the normal, you know, process.
All right, so Paul, I'll throw it back to you. What do you think we should do?
I'm sorry.
Oh, what do you? What do you think? When you, based on dates and so forth, and that my interest in gathering information, which I'm sure you share, when would you think we should schedule the meeting?
Well, I'm I'm sort of hung up here for a second on on the date by which the Board of Trustees has to approve a budget.
Approve it? That's May first.
By March thirty one, but is that incorrect, Brian?
No, it's May first. So so for the village, your your public, your public hearing.
I'm sorry, the I'm sorry, approve a a budget that goes out for public hearing.
The public hearing just has to be set by honor before April fifteenth. The deadline for you to get the budget from the clerk is March thirty first for the village board to receive the tentative budget.
So the the I thought the public hearing had to be held by April fifteenth.
It does. It has to open by April fifteenth and close by April twentieth. So in other words, you get it on the thirty first, you can make changes or not, set the public hearing, and then you shouldn't change the budget from the time you set that public hearing until you have it so that everybody's looking at the same budget. Then after the public hearing, you can make changes again, and you have to adopt by May first.
And so by the notice requirements and the like, you really have to, you really have to give your notice around April eighth for the April fifteenth date?
Yeah, it's a five day notice for the public hearing. So you don't have a lot of time. Let's put it.
Yeah, which is why I was thinking we should maybe do it at the special meeting next week. Because I'd like to have. I mean, I'm looking. I think Friday it's done, but, you know, just play it safe.
By the way, you could set the public hearing date whenever you want. If you knew it, you could set it tonight. It's not.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to do that, too. Let's make a decision, and my leg is killing me.
So it's.
Let's just set the public hearing right up.
Yeah, you know what? I'm gonna I literally, my leg has been up on this chair. I'm I think it's numb. I'm gonna bug out, and you guys set, you know, the meeting, set whatever you want. I'm fine. I'm open. I'm open schedule. And on both meetings, on the special meeting regarding the resident interested, as well as if you would like the public hearing on the budget, I'm fine. So I'll leave it to Tink Shaw to to close the meeting when it's appropriate, and I want to thank everybody. A very good meeting tonight. Brian, thank you. Elizabeth, thank you very much for all your preparation. And John, thank you very much. Meg, thank you very much, and I'm going to sign off.
Feel better.
Take care. Thank you.
Good night. All right, Tuesday, the thirtieth, I'm wide open. Everything else gets complicated.
Okay, well, I mean, as Mac was hoping to do, get it to you by Friday, which I think, you know, you guys can have a look at it by then. So you'll have the weekend at least look at it.
Well, I'm talking just a special meeting for the.
Right. He the, yeah, he just had some things he wanted to try to collect, so.
We could do it, or I don't know if I can make a meeting.
Okay, Paul?
That's what my my suggestion was Tuesday. Yes.
Tuesday. Okay. And Alan signed off, I guess.
Yeah.
We don't know if he can make it.
Well, we only need three of us, so if we agree, we can do it, then.
Okay. What time?
I prefer in the evening.
Does that work for you, Paul?
Sure.
What, like six?
Six works.
It works, okay.
Six thirty, maybe? Could you use six thirty?
Sure.
Okay.
Still daylight.
I know. Okay.
All right, so for notice, you're good with that. You don't need a minimum, so the clerk just need to send the notice to the paper by email or whatever and post it on the usual location.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, it just, Brian, can we just go back to that? The thirtieth, you're gonna have your special meeting? And Brian, I I just have to, I can, do I still have to put a notice in the paper?
Not published, just need to send it to your official.
Send it to them.
Yeah, just send it and then put it on your community board, and usually I know you put it on the website.
Right, okay. And at that meeting, then you're gonna set the date for the public hearing?
Oh, you guys could do it now if you want. It's up to you.
I would. I mean, why don't we just set the public hearing for the budget now? I mean.
I'm okay with that.
Then by the fourteenth, then we don't have to think about it. So.
But, yeah.
What day do you want to do it?
So you just have to open before April fifteenth.
Right, so we can open it today. Right?
No, no.
No, I have to get notice.
And it has to be published in the paper and all that, so it just has to be the public hearing will have to be before a a honor before April fifteenth. So we just have to pick a date that would give Elizabeth enough time to publish the notice in the paper, five days' notice. So I mean, I don't know how fast you want to be done, but you could do the week of the twelfth, you know, leading up to the fifteenth to set it that week, if any of those days work.
I can do it on Wednesday, the fourteenth. Would you say, Paul?
I I suggest the fifteenth.
But that is the public hearing, and then Elizabeth sends the notice out.
I can do the fifteenth, too.
Yeah, if it's that one gets published in the paper and posted, and that's the public hearing, so she has to send that to the paper and get it published at least five days before April fifteenth. And then, once you open it on the fifteenth, if it doesn't close that day, you can continue through Tuesday, the twentieth, at the latest, and then you have to close it by April twentieth.
Okay, so why don't we just decide now that Elizabeth sends a notice on the eighth that the public hearing is on the fifteenth?
Yeah, she can. You don't have to even set that.
I'll send the notice tomorrow.
Yeah, she'll get that done. You just need to set a public hearing for April fifteenth at whatever time you're gonna do it.
Okay.
And that should be done by motion.
I'm sorry, so what what day triggers? What is what is the date? What is the event that triggers your inability to make any further changes in the budget? Is it the setting of the of the public hearing date?
Yes, it would.
So you don't want to set the public hearing date?
Yeah, well, we are gonna have a special meeting, so why don't you do this? Here's my suggestion. Stick stick with the date and time you're setting now. Let's say the fifteenth at whatever time. But let's set it on the thirtieth. So this way, if you want to make any changes initially, you could do it on the thirtieth and then set the public hearing.
Because once you set, once you set the date for the public hearing, you can't make changes in the budget.
The law doesn't say that, but it's it's the recommended best. The law doesn't say that, but it's, it's the recommended best practice not to change it because then people show up at your public hearing and now you're looking at a different budget than the one that was published. So it's best to not make changes once you've set that public hearing and told everybody. But you are having a meeting on the thirtieth, so it's not like people wouldn't be aware of that if they attend it. But maybe the best bet is just, you know, since you know you're going to go with the fifteenth, you're, you're ready for that and then just actually set the public hearing on the thirtieth when you're at the meeting and then after you make whatever changes you might want to make.
We can send the budget.
Saying is, what I'm suggesting is, there may very well be additional changes in discussion after that one meeting on the thirtieth. So you don't want to, am I correct that you don't want to set your public hearing date officially until you finish that sequence of changes?
Yeah, I mean, the key is really the publication is, is putting what the budget you put out there, right? So what you're going to put on your website and say, this is our, you know, budget for the public hearing? That shouldn't be changed. So I don't think it's so much a concern with the date or when you set it. It's the point that when you put it on there and you say, here's the budget for the public hearing, that shouldn't change.
Right.
So that's really what, what the issue is, not so much when you set the date, but that when you give it to the public, don't change it until you get to the public hearing and then you can make changes again.
So if we put, if Elizabeth puts notice on the eighth that the public hearing is coming the fifteenth, that notice should include the tentative budget.
And it should be on the website as well. I mean, it's really not in the notice, but it's on the website.
Well, yeah, but that time, when she sends a notice out, that's when we publish the tentative budget on the website and then we don't touch it until after the public hearing.
Or, yeah, that's correct.
And when we make changes, can we do that via email back and forth or is that an open meetings law issue?
It should be discussed publicly. I mean, I'm not going to say you couldn't send an email to the mayor yourself and say, hey, look, I think we should do that because that change is going to happen at the meeting anyway or it's going to be in the budget. So there's always some background. You could even have John Ledwith might send an email and say, hey, I need more money, you know. Those conversations don't all have to be public so long as your budget is public and your public hearing and then if you make changes after the public hearing, that's normally going to take place in public. I'll say it's never an executive session, but it doesn't preclude individual communications, but there shouldn't be a group email of board members talking about the budget by any means.
Okay, yep, that's what I thought, just wanted to clarify. Okay.
So, all right, so you're good for the thirtieth, so do you want to wait on setting the public hearing then? Or do you want to set it?
I, I think we can set it, there's no harm.
Yeah, I don't think there's harm as long as, like I say, you, you, once you, just once you put your budget out there for everybody and you tell them they can come get a copy, that's when it shouldn't, no changes should be made, so.
Yeah, let's do it, there's a safe time at the special meeting and there's only three of us to, you know, make this decision right now, so. You know, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for the budget for April fifteenth at seven P M.
Second.
All in favor or take a, probably say that, I just made a question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, but just going back to, was there a motion for the meeting or did we just discuss that? For the thirtieth, I'm saying, for the other meeting?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Why don't we just do a motion for that, make it official for May, April thirtieth at six thirty P M?
Yeah, no.
March thirtieth.
Sorry, March.
Or six thirty, so Paul gets an extra half hour sunlight. Before he's confined to his desk in front of the computer. I'm all for it, too, by the way.
He's got to walk the dog.
I'll make a motion to.
Set a special meeting?
Meeting for April thirtieth, March thirtieth, six thirty P M. Do I have to say what we're discussing?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any other business for the board?
Looks like no more business before the board, right?
Hey, guys.
I have nothing else.
Can I just quickly comment that there's a B A R meeting scheduled for the fifteenth of April at seven o'clock, so you might just have to shift that around.
Or we can just be really fast.
That's true, too. Or you could do like six thirty for the public hearing, whatever, just putting it out there.
Maybe it works for me, so I'm good.
Um.
Does it work for you?
Meg, thank you for that. That's something we should discuss.
So you want to, you want to wait?
Historically, I mean, look, we, we're separate boards, there's no reason for us.
Well, let's, let's think, so historically, right? Historically, we have seen instances both where nobody shows up at the budget hearing and we've seen instances where lots of people show up, you know, for the budget hearing.
I guess we're kind of denying our board members who are obviously show interest in the village, the ability to attend the budget.
So, so perhaps we. Should schedule that public hearing on the fourteenth?
Yeah, I'm fine with the fourteenth.
Okay. Okay.
All right, I make a motion to reschedule the April fifteenth budget, public hearing meeting, is it meeting or hearing?
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Technically both.
Do April fourteenth at six thirty P M.
Second it.
Do you want to keep it at seven? There's no reason.
Or seven, seven, I'm sorry.
You had it, but, okay.
Seven.
Seven.
Everything I said before, but seven.
Maybe add a second?
Second.
I was second.
All in favor, okay.
Aye.
Okay.
So Brian, do I have to record both of the motions for that public hearing or just the second one?
I would record both because the second one basically reschedules the prior one.
Okay. And Tinka, you want to go on record as the second for that second one? Okay.
Yes. Sure, put my name.